And we are live.
The Chair notes the time is 6:03 PM. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning Board of Appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge. As ZBA Chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of the ZBA members. Steve Judge is present, Mr. Craig Meadows.
Present.
Mr. Everold Henry.
Here.
Mr. David Slowetter.
Present.
And Mr. John Varner.
Present.
A quorum is present. Also attending the public hearing tonight is Jacinta Williams, a planner with the town. And Christine Brestrop may join us, who's, she's currently working with the planning department. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a quasi-judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 40A of the General Laws of the Commonwealth, the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, in Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties of interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff, and they may be viewed via the Town of Amherst YouTube channel and ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the board has completed his questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the Chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen or by pressing star nine on their phone. The Chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the close of the hearing to file a decision. For variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until a written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed in the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with the relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeals period, the permit must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda, a public hearing on ZBA FY 2023-18 ASD Schutzbury MA Solar LLC. Request for a special permit under Section 3.340 of the Zoning Bylaw to construct a 9.35 megawatt DC, 4.4 megawatt AC grounded-mounted solar rotake array spanning 41 acres on a 102-acre site, with accompanying battery storage system at three parcels of land owned by WD Cowell Inc., identified as Maps 9B Parcel 11 and 12, Map 9D Parcel 27 on Schutzbury Road, RO outline residence zoning districts. Fundage and access to the subject parcels of land is located between 187 and 201 Schutzbury Road. This is continued from hearings on July 25th, 2024, and September 12th, 2024. ZBA 2025-15, 85 North Whitney Street, request to modify the FY 2015-02 special permit in order to convert an additional 1,190 square foot of office space into a three-bedroom, 1.5-bath residential unit per property located at 85 North Whitney Street, Map 11D Parcel 183 RG General Residence Zoning Districts. After that, there's an opportunity for general public comment on any matter not before the board tonight, other business not anticipated within 48 hours, and then the German. Do any members of the board have a disclosure to make? If not, the first item on the agenda is ZBA FY 2023-18 ASD Schutzbury MA Solar LLC. We don't have the, we're gonna move this, continue this to April 10th at 6 o'clock. We don't have a witness for the consultant, the consultant for the applicant or the applicant present tonight to hear this, and so we will not be able to have testimony or take matters on, action on this tonight. So we'll move this to April, I would move that we move this, continue this hearing to April 10th at 6 PM. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion about the motion to continue? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to continue. The Chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slowetter?
Aye.
And Mr. Varner, you're not on this panel, so I can't ask you to vote on that. So the vote is four to nothing. The motion passes. It's moved until April 10th, I think I said, at 6 PM. The next over business is ZBA FY 2025-15, 85 North Whitney Street, request to modify the FY 2015-02 special permit in order to convert an additional 1,190 square feet of office space into a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath residential unit on property located at 85 North Whitney Street. We conducted a site visit on Tuesday, January 21st. We entered the building through the parking lot after observing the parking lot, and we viewed the existing studio rental. We looked at some office spaces that are currently, that currently have at the location. We toured the area proposed to be converted from office space to a residential rental. We observed that most of the existing wall in the unit that was going to be converted were not load-bearing, and therefore facilitated redesign of the area into a three-bedroom unit. The entrance to the unit would be through the building's entrance rather than directly from the outside. We observed where windows and doors were to be relocated, and finally, we inquired if the applicant would be, would install downcast Dark Sky compliant lighting on the property. I think that pretty much sums up the, the visit. Is there any additional questions or matters that need to be mentioned for our site visit? If not, I'll go through the submissions on this application. We've received the ZBA application data for FY 2024, which includes the application, draft of permit, of the permit findings from the applicant, parking description, a, some additional information regarding North Whitney Street and the project from November 6, 2024. We received a management plan. We received a project narrative. Sample lease agreement for the three-bedroom apartment. We've also received a, two documents, which are the existing proposed plan designed by Tom Berry from Coon Riddle dated 10/30/2024, and existing, and existing and proposed plan designed by Tom Berry dated October 30th, 2024. Staff has submitted two or three documents. The special permit from 1985, the special permit from 2015, and the special permit's case is unknown. The floor plan was designed by Coon Riddle dated August 27th, 2014. Mr. Greenbaum, are you representing yourself tonight?
Yes, please.
Can you give your name and address for the record and then give us a description of what your application proposes?
My name is Joel Greenbaum. I live at 87 Linden Ridge Road, Amherst. My proposal tonight is to convert approximately 1,200 square feet of office space to residential use. It has been office space ever since we owned the building, but it's been vacant since June, and I thought since this space is in the residential portion of the property, I would try to convert it to apartments, since there's a stronger need for apartments than office at the moment. As far as the actual work is concerned, most of those partition walls will all come down. They're non-bearing. A mason will have to reconfigure the exterior to three individual double-hung windows, and then the interior will, will get rebuilt with the new plumbing, electrical, framing, and such.
And you're, the result of this would, you'd move from 24 to 25 residential units in that building, is that right?
Twenty-three to 24.
Twenty-three to 24.
Yes. The building, for the most part, is all studios, people living by themselves. Apartment 17 is a two-bedroom. Apartment 20 is a two-bedroom. But other than that, the rest are all, apartment 13 in the back is a three-bedroom, excuse me. The rest are all studios. It's a pretty quiet building on the whole.
Do people have questions? Is that your presentation, Mr. Greenbaum?
I think so. I don't really know what to say. That, that's it in a nutshell.
All right. Are there questions from the members of the panel for Mr. Greenbaum? Mr. Henry?
Mr. Greenbaum, what was the business in the current location prior to it being empty?
It was Almaden. Almaden is a company, they were there for 15 years, and they kept getting bigger, bigger, and bigger, and then they outgrew the space. Almaden is a company which, which is in Slow Bodies Building now in South Amherst. They, no, that's not where they are. They're in the park. Before that, I'm sorry. They, they take care of mentally disabled people, house them and care for them. That's what they do. So they were there for 15 years, and they outgrew the space.
Okay.
It wasn't an ideal space for them, honestly, because everything was all spread out, as you saw, in all different directions. So their new space, they're more unified.
Okay. So the harder question, I was trying to understand the nature of the business that was there. So it wasn't anything industrial, like?
Not with Almaden. No, they were an office company. There's never really been anything industrial there while we've owned it, but it's, there've been many science companies there. It was mostly laboratories for years and years. And you know who else was there for many years was National Evaluation Systems. They were there actually after eco-science, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. And were there any, with your application, were there any concerns flagged by the building commissioner?
Yes, sir. Not flags, but what he wanted me to do was to have the architect do a, I think they call it like a code compliance, to see what needs to be done to the space to make it code compliant, and he did that. So for example, the space he believes will have to be sprinkled, and he believes there'll have to be a one-hour fire separation on the ceiling, 5/8 sheet rock.
And?
He hasn't presented it yet to the commissioner formally. We wanted to see, but he, he did some preliminary research just to see where we stand, and then we wanted to go through the ZBA. And then if it was to be approved, then we would formalize it and present it to Rob.
And there is no requirement on your part for us to waive those things that he's essentially voiced that is needed in the special permit?
Oh, no, sir. I wouldn't ask you to waive anything, no.
Okay. And if this special permit is granted, then this entire building now becomes a residential property?
Well, it's considered mixed use because the warehouse is still light industrial, the whole, the whole property. I'm not sure if it's the whole property or the warehouse is, is zoned light industrial. I think it's one of the only and final last light industrial zonings in Amherst.
But I meant the, I meant the building as a whole, because I thought this was the only space now, but it's not the perfect.
So the brick building, the old factory building, will be 100% residential, you're correct.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking? I'm sorry.
Yes, that was what I was asking, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Greenbaum.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Slowetter, you had your hand up?
Actually, Mr. Henry referred to what I was going to ask. I wanted, I didn't realize how much of the building were residential units, and I was going to ask what, what is in the building other than residential units. And I think I just found out that if, if this is converted, there won't be anything in there that is not residential, except for the addition on the left that we saw with the overhead doors.
That's correct, yeah.
That's, that's going to be ware, that's warehouse space? What, or offices, or, that's not residential?
Not residential. It's commercial.
But the original building that I asked you about on Tuesday, what was this? And you said it had been a leather, leather-producing facility. The original building with that nice brick exterior is going to be entirely residential. I believe that's what you told Mr. Henry, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So it's not, so it's not really a multi-use building at that point?
Well, it, if you're including the garage, it's still multi-use. It's still one building.
Right. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. That answers it.
Other questions for Mr. Greenbaum?
May I ask one more?
Yes, absolutely.
So is it all the other units now are studios, and this would be a three-bedroom? Is there sufficient parking if three people have three cars for this apartment?
There is sufficient parking, yes. We've never had a, a parking problem on this property, even when the businesses were there. And they're all gone at the moment. But no, I don't believe there will be. No, sir.
Okay. Thank you again.
Mr. Slowetter?
I'm gonna have to try and think of something that Mr. Henry doesn't beat me to on this. When, when this was fully occupied, this unit as, in its previous use, there were, I presume there were more than three people working in that unit, right?
Yeah, there were four.
Four, so.
People coming and going.
Four could imply four cars, so therefore you're replacing some number of cars with maybe three cars, but it's, sounds pretty comparable.
Probably two to three.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work on thinking of something that Mr. Henry doesn't first. That's my goal for tonight. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Greenbaum, do you know how many parking spaces you have there?
Thirty-three, I believe.
One of the things we talked about on the site visit was the possibility of putting in downcast Dark Sky, Dark Sky compliant lighting. That's not in your plans? I would think about putting that as a condition. Is that something that you could, that you could comply with?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Right. And then the other thing is, is we did get a complaint response form. I'm gonna try to pull it up. Or would you, Ms. Williams, would you put that on the board for us? So if we run through. So do you have anybody, are you the sole contact for all complaints?
Whenever anything happens in our business, people call me. I mean, I can give you backup numbers. I just, it may or may not be as effective, you know?
Well, I mean, it's how you run your business. I mean, if you want to be the first, the first.
The way I run my business, everything goes through here.
But I think it'd be good if, in case you're scuba diving in Bon Air or something.
Yeah.
Maybe you should have.
Unfortunately, I don't, but yeah, I'd be happy to. I can put my maintenance guys on there if you want. I've done that with other permits.
And I also noted you have a resident, you have resident managers in this building.
There's a resident manager in that building. That's correct, yes.
So I would think that completing this form with you as, as, if you want to be the first contact, and their number's there as well, in case you just can't cover it, would be good.
That, that's a good idea, actually. I didn't think about that, I'm sorry. I'm gonna add Richard, and if you want, I'll put my main maintenance guy on there as well.
Great. I do note that there's, the last complaint we have is 2015.
Yeah, I don't even know what that was. There are little to no complaints in that building.
Okay.
Pretty quiet.
Other questions? Comments? If there's no other questions or comments from members of the board, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. If you wish to do so, please raise your hand on the screen or, use the raised hand function on the screen or star nine on your phone. The staff will call on people. You'll have about three minutes to express your, your opinion, and please make your comments to the board. Ms. Williams, do we have any participants who wish to speak?
No, we do not. Not seeing any hands.
No hands. All right. Is there any other, anything else you wish to say, Mr. Greenbaum? We're gonna move to the public hearing, a public meeting next, which is typically not a time for discussion, which is where the board deliberates. So if there's anything else you'd wish to say, this is a good time to do it?
I think I'm all set.
All right. Members of the board, do you have any other questions for Mr. Greenbaum, for staff? If not, I would entertain a motion that we move to the public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded? Any discussion on the motion? If not, the Chair votes aye. Mr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slowetter?
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. We're in the public meeting for this portion. So my, and this is where the, this is where the board deliberates, and it's typically not a time for public comments. My impression of this is that it seems to make sense, that it's good use of existing housing, provides one additional unit in town, and three-bedroom is nice, because that does have at least the possibility of family living there, as opposed to just students, and we're in dire need of affordable family housing, and if that's a possibility, that's good. And I don't see that it poses a detriment to the neighborhood. But that's my initial impression. I would like to see a condition on the lighting, downcast lighting, which the applicant agrees to, and I'd want to make sure that the complaint response form contains his name and the other two names that he has so indicated. We put that in the condition as well. But that's my thoughts on this matter, and I'd open it up to discussion from my fellow board members.
I, I would agree with you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I reviewed the previous special permit that was granted. I, I think this is in compliance with all the conditions that, all the requirements, rather, in this Zoning Bylaws. This is also, as you stated, a welcome addition to having, housing in the town of Amherst, and I, given that we're turning this holdout, so to speak, into, this entire building will now be residential use. I think it's a good use of the space. As long as Mr. Greenbaum complies with the building manager's requirements as to how to convert this property, I will support this special permit.
You know, that's a good, good point. I think he has, he has no chance of getting a building permit if those, if he doesn't comply with the building commissioner's assessment, so that's good for clarify that. Mr. Slowetter?
I also support the Chair's motion, but even more, I support Mr. Henry's comments, of course, because that's what I have to do tonight. And, and certainly, taking the one remaining space that is not residential and making it residential is not going to change the nature of the property or the building or the operation of it at all. So I think this is the most minimal impact, if any at all, and I have no problem supporting this as well.
Mr. Varner?
I have one question, and this doesn't impinge on the issue at hand, but it's a point of education for me. The complaint response plan seemed like something new to the, the building, and I was curious if apartment buildings generally in Amherst have these on file someplace, and why we didn't just sort of add a room on to the complaint response plan that was already in place?
I'm not sure if, if, well, first off, complaint response forms are required as part of a special permit application for rental housing. So it's something that needs to be done. That's the first thing. Secondly, I don't know when that started, but it's been going on as long as I've been on the board. And so I'm not sure if that, if there was an existing complaint response form, which he could have just modified to fit today's situations before that. But, but it does, it is something that for rental housing, we do have a complaint response form, which is pretty, pretty basic. Just here are the three numbers that you can contact. Here's the hours they cover, or whatever, however they deal with complaints has to be laid out so that the tenants know as well as the neighbors. And that can all be got from public documents.
Thanks.
You bet. Well, if we have no further questions or considerations and no comments from the board, I'd like to run through the conditions first and see if we can approve those. You'll see in the project, the draft project application report, there's proposed conditions of approval. The first one is the standard that the units shall be constructed and used substantially in accordance with the floor plans prepared by Coon Riddle on October 30th, 2024, and approved by this body on 2023. The use of the property shall be limited to 24 dwelling units and associated commercial uses. Additional units or creation of additional bedrooms shall require modification of the special permit. A total of 18 employees, whether in one or multiple businesses, are allowed under this permit. Any increase in the number of employees over 18 or for use is not allowed under site plan review under Section 3.3 shall require a formal modification of this permit to evaluate potential impacts of the use related to parking and/or other impacts. The residential use shall be managed in accordance with the management plan, as, and I would add as amended to that, Ms. Williams, because we're amending the management plan with the complaint response form that Mr. Greenbaum is gonna submit. The approved management plan shall be in place at all times. Upon a change of ownership of the property, the new owner shall present to the board for review and approval at a public meeting an updated management plan and any other information necessary to confirm that the use is operating within the scope of the special permit. And then the next two conditions are standard conditions that we put on all non-owner occupied rental property in town. The first deals with logging and maintaining owner complaints regarding noisy, unlawful, or offensive conduct disturbing other tenants or adjacent property owners. These are kept in, by the applicant and by the landlord, and then they're filed with the, the town on an annual basis, and it's done when the number nine requires that filing and review when they, the rental, residential rental registration permit is granted to the property. And those are conditions that we propose on all rental properties. I'd also add that to this, if we could, that the complaint response form, as outlined by Mr. Greenbaum at this meeting, which includes three names, will be included in the management plan. And that. Good. And lastly, that the, that current outdoor lighting will be replaced with downcast dark sky compliant lighting. And in compliance with the ZBA rules and regulations. Any questions or comments about the proposed conditions? If not, I would entertain a motion that we approve the proposed conditions, numbers one. They'll have to be renumbered, but as, as they appear here on the, on the board with the numbers three and six struck out. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, that the proposed conditions be adopted. Any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, the chair votes aye. Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Varner?
Aye.
The motion carries four to nothing. The conditions are approved. Next, we have to make findings. In reviewing this, the zoning, the applicable zoning bylaws, the staff draft, and I agree with the staff draft, points out that the application meets the requirements of section three point three two five, which deals with mixed use buildings. It meets the requirements of section seven point zero, which deals generally with parking and access regulations. It, and we do have to make a specific finding on article nine, non-conforming lots, uses and structures. Section nine point two deals with increasing the non-conformity of the use in effect. It's a non, pre-existing non-conforming use. By adding one additional rental unit, we are increasing the non-conformity. But we don't, I don't find that that, believe that this will increase the effect upon the, the well, actually, this does increase the non-conformity of the use. It is just changing it to, to one more, to more residential, but not a new type of non-conformity. So that's nine point two. Nine point two zero one deals with previously determined. That was, we already did this in section three point three where we determined that they have it complies with section three point three two five, which permits modest changes. And it's not a dramatic change in the, the exterior or the windows. Section nine point two two, this is the guts of the non-conforming bylaw. This deals with the expansion of a non-conforming use. This bylaw says the authority may also authorize under a special permit, a non-conforming use of a building, structure or land to be extended to or a non-conforming building to be structurally altered, enlarged or reconstructed, providing that the authority finds that such alternatives, alteration, enlargement or reconstruction should not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or non-conforming building. And I, I think we can find that the expansion of the non-conforming use does not substantially, is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood in the area. So that's, that's nine point, section nine point two. Are there any questions about that? If not, we've got to go through the ten point three eight findings. Ten point three eight zero and ten point three eight one. It's suitability located in the neighborhood. This is, it's, it's suitably located in that neighborhood. Ten point three eight two, three eight three, three eight five and three eight seven deals with creating a nuisance due to air water pollution, flood noise, odor, dust vibration. Not create a substantial inconvenience to a butters. It protects the adjoining premises from detrimental or offensive uses. Provides convenient and safe vehicular movement within the site. I think the proposal meets those requirements. Ten point three eight four deals with adequate and appropriate facilities. The, the facilities are in place currently and the proposal meets those requirements of this section. Ten point three eight six deals with conformance of parking signs and regulations. We've already found that to be the case when we reviewed section seven, article seven of the bylaw. So it meets the requirement there. Ten point three eight seven was already included in the, in the second group of things that we, sections that we just dealt with. Ten point three eight eight, the proposal ensures adequate space for off-street parking and loading vehicles. There, it does, there's not a lot of change necessitated by moving out business and putting in a three-bedroom apartment. Ten point three eight nine deals with adequate methods of disposal or storage for sewage refuge. Again, it, it already exists on site and the and the proposal uses a adequate dumpster and a single stream recycling dumpster. Ten point three nine zero, protection from floodhanders, flood hazards, this is not, does not apply. Protection, section ten point three nine one, unique or important natural, historic or scenic features. Again, this does not apply. Ten point three nine two deals with adequate landscaping, including screening of adjacent residential uses, provision of street trees, et cetera. There's been no changes proposed to the landscaping in this instance. Ten point three nine three, the proposal provides protections for adjacent properties by minimizing intrusion of lighting, including parking lot and exterior lighting. So the use of cutoff luminaries, light shields, lowered heights of light poles or similar solutions. And because of the conditions that we just approved, I think we can find that this finding is met. Ten point three nine zero, the proposal avoids, to the extent feasible, impact on steep slopes. The section does not apply. Ten point three nine five, this proposal does not create disharmony with respect to the terrain and the use scale architecture of existing buildings within the vicinity, which have functional or visual relationships there too. There's minimal exterior alterations at all. A couple of windows are, will be moved and a door will be replaced. Minimal exterior modifications. Ten point three nine six, the proposal provides screening for storage areas. They do. They, there's designated storage site shed. And ten point three nine seven provides adequate recreational facilities. This does not apply. And there's, there's no change in that from what currently is approved. Intent, section ten point three nine eight, the proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and the goals of the master plan. It creates housing and I think we've all mentioned it's good to have additional housing and potentially family housing in Amherst. So I think we can say that we've met the required findings and made the required findings under ten point three and as well as nine point two two. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we, that the findings required of us are made. If there's no discussion, the vote occurs on approval of the findings. The chair votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Mr. Varner?
Aye.
The vote is four to nothing and the findings are made. Next, there, this is where we would make a determination on the application before us tonight. So I would entertain a motion that we approve ZBA. Let me just get it. I always get this part. The piece of paper away from me every time and I have to go search for the exact language.
But while you're doing that, I'd like to ask Mr. Greenbaum a question.
Certainly.
I noticed in the findings that the, that this, is this property called Knickerbocker Apartments? And is that because the leather company was Knickerbocker or there's a love of old New York or why? From a historical point of view, where does that name come from?
It comes from the name of the Knickerbocker Leather Novelty Company.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I saw that and it was a mystery and I'm glad I figured it out. Thank you.
So someone in Amherst High School in the nineteen sixties, I want to say, wrote a whole research paper on the company. And I have it filed away somewhere. I'm gonna look for it and I'll give it to Jacinta. Maybe she'd like to put it in the file. Maybe she already has a copy of it. I don't know, but it was pretty interesting.
It would have made this hearing more interesting if we had the history on the building. I can tell you that. I would have enjoyed knowing what they did.
Well, you know, we have old photographs in the lobby. I, I invited you in, but you didn't want to go in. Maybe I should have told you about the old photographs.
Maybe.
Oh, it's cool because that's what Amherst was. Amherst was an old industrial town and most of the industrial is gone. So I think it's a neat building.
Yeah. Okay, we don't seem to turn the word Knickerbocker come up in this area a whole lot.
No, people hate Knickerbocker around here, right? They're all Celtics fans.
Right.
Right. But, but the Yankees, the New York Yankees were originally the Knickerbockers.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Okay, it's a two-way flow of historical information. This is why we're here.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Greenbaum.
Thank you very much.
All right. I would entertain a motion that we approve ZBA FY twenty twenty five dash fifteen eighty-five North Whitney Street requesting to modify FY two thousand fifteen dash zero two special permit in order to convert an additional one thousand one hundred and ninety square feet of office space into a three-bedroom, one and a half bath residential unit for property located eighty-five North Whitney Street. MAP eleven D parcel one eighty-three RG General Residence Zoning Districts as with conditions.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the move? And to close the hearing, additional thing, we have to close the hearing on the, on the application as well in that motion. So if there are no discussion on the motion, the chair votes aye. Mr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
And our historian, Mr. Slaveter?
An historic Knickerbocker aye. Thank you.
The vote is four to nothing. Motion carries. The special permit application with condition is passed. The hearing is closed. The public hearing is closed on this matter and congratulations, Mr. Greenbaum. Good luck.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
You bet.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
The next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. This is an opportunity for people in the public to speak on any matter that we did not deal with or was not on the agenda tonight. And just raise your hand via the Zoom app or star nine on your phone if you wish to speak. Ms. Williams, I see no hands raised. Do you?
That's, that's correct. I see no hands raised as well.
Then the next order of business is any old business. Let's just discuss schedule real briefly. What are our next two hearings?
So I will pull up the schedule one moment. Can everyone see that? Okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so we are here. Our next scheduled meeting, so we've got the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. Mr. Slaveter is scheduled to be out for both of those, but I know that we also discussed having an administrative meeting. So I didn't know if you wanted to try to do that during one of these.
Do you have any applications pending?
Not that, none that will be ready in that time. No, no, I don't think so.
Then we can do an administrative meeting.
Yeah.
And we, so we have nothing, we don't have anything that'll be ready for February thirteenth to the twenty-seventh?
I don't think so. I got to process the new ones that just came in pretty much today and within the last few days.
So is, is business getting, picking up, Ms. Williams?
It will pick up. The, the rush was right before the holidays. So now it's, you know, everyone is coming back slowly, but I'm sure surely I've got four or three sitting on my desk that I need to look at. So those, you'll be seeing those pretty soon. One of them is Twenty Eight Green Leaves. That's gonna be on the March thirteenth agenda. We are gonna have two more. I don't want to say what they are just yet. Just want to make sure that they are complete and ready to be published legally and then I'll update the schedule accordingly.
So, you know, I an administrative meeting is something I, I would hope that we could get everybody to attend.
Sure.
And I'd hate to leave any, I don't know if some of the alternates can, cannot attend that meeting as well, but Mr. Slaveter can. So I think I think we could probably bolt on an administrative meeting on a, another matter with the if we don't have a real contentious meeting, contentious issue in front of us, we can probably carve out forty-five minutes to an hour for an administrative meeting to deal with things at a later point in time and see if everybody can attend.
Okay.
And I, but the first time we could do that, it looks to me to be April tenth, because I'm out on the twenty-seventh. Mr. Slaveter is out on the thirteenth, the twenty-seventh and the thirteenth.
Right.
Have you gotten back from everybody the their, their schedule and when they can attend?
So I've heard from about three or four of you. I think Mr. Henry is out the week of the twenty-fourth, if I'm not mistaken, April twenty-fourth.
That's correct.
So it's looking like maybe May, well, no, because you're out May eighth. So maybe, maybe May twenty-second might be the time to try to do an administrative meeting.
Oh, yeah. Or we got Chutesbury Solar on the tenth. That's as soon as we could do that.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, listen, here's what we should do. Ms. Williams, I, I, that's a long time if people have something they want to discuss. Waiting five months to do that is, is a long time. So we can certainly meet before that. I hate to have people absent for it. So let's do this. Why don't you go back to all the members as well as the alternates and see when their availability for these dates? We'll pick the date where the least number of people are gone and we'll try to do something before May on an administrative meeting. Okay?
I can do that, yes. And as soon as I process these other applications and review them with the building commissioner, I will update the public, public hearing schedule and send that out to you as well. So you know what's coming and on what day.
And I think my also coming up, we do have a comprehensive, there's another comprehensive permit out there that's percolating, is there not?
There might be. There might be, but no one has definitively said anything to me.
And that's another, but the thought is that there's a rental housing comp permit that might be percolating out there. And I think it's fair to say that Chutesbury will take up a number of meetings going forward as well.
Yes.
Studies that have to be done and other, other kinds of work that's yet to be done on, that has to be, yet to be done and, and some yet to be presented to us. So that's gonna take up some time. So to the extent that we can get applications done prior to April would be really helpful, because I think we'll have some, a lot of work to do in the, through the summer and into the fall. Okay. All right. I think that's the plan. So go back to everybody. And if you need me to call them and get, to get their their dates when they're gonna be gone, we'll, we'll try to encourage everybody so we can make a decision on the next meeting. All right?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Other questions? All right. Well, Mr. Varner, thank you for helping us out tonight.
My pleasure.
All right. And Ms. Williams, thank you for your work and
You're welcome.
Mr. Slaveter and Mr. Henry, thank you. And we're done early. So go enjoy the evening.
Yes.
You got a free Thursday night.
Vote to end the, we did everything and the meeting.
Now we have to just, we'll adjourn.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adjourn. This motion is not debatable. Chair votes aye. Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
And Mr. Varner, you have the last word. Motion carries four to nothing. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.